Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of reaching action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by any board member. Item three is approval of the amendments of the January 4th, 2021 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transaction. Approval of retire request to remain on county health and dental insurance plans. C, approval of the chairman to sign the liability and property policies with One Beacon and Travelers Insurance for calendar year 2021. Approval of resolution thanking and commending Kent Ripke for years of service with Woodbury County Sheriff's Office. Item six, secondary roads, Mark Nara. Consideration of a utility permit for installation of a new sanitary force main in County Rights of Way and Rock Township for the City of Correction Bill.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. I did want to mention that this memorandum of personnel transaction is slightly different than the one that went out to the public. We had a vote yesterday, and so we had to change a few items. Matthew Young, Rocky, and then Keith Radek had to be switched on here. So that is how that changed. I also wanted to speak a little bit about the liability and property policies. I just wanted to mention that we did have an increase, and it was 6%. Our deductible is $100,000, whereas most industry is closer to 250, but industry average is 15% for this year as far as increase. The comp and collision coverage is averaging about $185 per automobile. And the inland marine, that is actually the same premium as last year, though with help of Mark Nara, we revalued all their equipment, and it did actually double. So that is why we have that increase. I just wanted to inform the board of the little bit of increase we've had with that this year. Any questions?
Questions from Melissa on those topics?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All move approval of consent agenda. Motion by DeWitt, second by Mr. Wright. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four to zero. We have next on here an action item. For consideration of selling the county farm and appraisal, approval of appraisal of using lost local option sales tax funds. Mistress Taylor and Wright?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is an action item today, in so much as it asks for funding to have a proper appraisal of the county farm. And just to give a little bit of an overview, and then Supervisor Wright, if you want to chime in as well. We have a county farm. Not many people know, maybe of 188 to 200 acres. The cash rents for approximately $66,000 a year. This is going to be an extremely tough budget year, and Supervisor Zung and I have an agenda item related to the budget later, which looks to this as a possible funding source to meet the gap this year in budget. But we may be able to meet and close session as allowable by code under the advice and consent of our county attorney to determine a minimal acceptable price and put this land up for auction and return it to private enterprise and the tax rules. That would dedicate a significant capital injection, needing and bridging the gap in a difficult budget year. And my, or our hope, I believe, is that the county poor farm is kind of an antiquated model, dates back 100 to 150 years, back to 1870, 1876, when the poor and indigent could farm the land, or those at the old county home. The mentally ill could utilize this as a livelihood. Even if we didn't have the budget gap, to me, it makes sense that, as other counties have, that they'd return this to private enterprise, especially since it would take 21 years approximately of rent in order to equal the approximate price that we may be able to get for it. Talking to an appraiser, dividing this into two or three parcels may make good sense for saleability. May need to go to subdivision and planning and zoning, but I believe it makes fiscal sense and from a conservative principle outside the original purpose, which it no longer serves, or the, I think, unrealistic idea of land swapping. So those would be some opening comments.
And I signed on to this agenda item as well, mainly to, as an additional step at pursuing, just as the next step. We're going to take a look at selling the farm. This is the next step that's required to do that. We need to have it appraised to see its value. So by no means, I don't believe that we've reached the end of discussion of whether or not we're going to move ahead with this, but this is the first step towards that possibility. And as Supervisor Taylor shared, it's something that we're considering because I have a goal, and it's shared by others on board, to keep taxes flat in every area of the levy. In doing so, that is going to require some challenging, some challenging steps to be taken. And so we're going to explore, explore wherever we can, opportunities for either saving money in this budget cycle, or generating additional revenues, so that we can maintain the tax level at what county residents have grown accustomed to for the last several years.
Mr. Ung?
Well, I support the move to gather more information and see where we're at, because it is something that should be looked at at least every few years, and it's been at least a few years since we've given it a hard look. It is an interesting use, to say the least, of county resources and county government. Probably would be a surprise to a lot of people to know that the county actually rents out land. It's been good for us financially, but of course, it's, you know, we just want to make sure that it's benefiting the community as a whole. So I guess the question is, how soon could this appraisal be done?
So talking to Dennis Raymond, who is the president of the American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisers at Stalkup Ag, and you'll see that he's listed on the motion, he said by the end of January, the appraisal could be done. My hope would be that, he's president of that society, I mean, he's got, resides in Woodbury County, that he might also be able to meet with the board and make recommendations into timeline of saleability, how this ought to be partialled up, because he mentioned the more competition, rather than one entire parcel, the better. So, end of January.
Mr. Radek, anything?
I think selling it makes sense. Of course, I brought it up four years ago, and I just don't think we should be in the business of owning and renting out land as a developer or real estate investment county, you know. I think it makes more sense to probably sell it in three or four parcels or sections, because I think you'd get more competition. And I think that you'll have different uses. I think the triangular parcel, it's kind of south of, what is it, Old 141, right there, north of Prairie Hills, that could be developed into housing rather than farm ground. I don't know. I think it could have other uses. And as housing, of course, it would pay quite a bit more in property taxes and maybe be equal to what we were getting in rent payments in the future. So in the end, I think we'll end up the same, and you'll have that ground back on the private market, not necessarily owned by us.
I'm not personally in favor of selling it for a couple of different reasons. I understand everybody's, everybody's position here. You're right, I am not convinced that we need to be in the landowner business. I think we've got a lot of other small parcels that would make sense to get rid of. I look at this a lot less as an income base, but at the same time, I don't look at this piece of property as, I look, I do look at it as sort of a savings account. I just am not convinced that this board, this levy year is in such desperate need that we're looking at a dire consequence if we keep it. I'm just not convinced that, I think that selling this is kind of a, for lack of a better word, throw the baby out with the bathwater. I just, I'm not convinced that this is in our best interest to sell this at this time. I will consent to getting an appraisal done, but as far as, and I would, so I'm asking, is this a move to, a motion to sell the land after we get an appraisal?
No.
Is this a consideration and to okay the appraisal?
Yeah, and I thought it would otherwise be, you know, this board's been very good about typically having information in an action. And so this would be a seismic deal, one and a half to $2 million land sale. So the only thing that would be obligated today would be $1,800 from local option sales tax, which I believe we have in unobligated funds. But that doesn't encumber us to do anything beyond that. I think this would need to come back before the board again.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Well, I'd moved the county farm appraised by Dennis Raymond at Stalkup Ag, and worked to gain information so the board can make the best informed decision, utilizing $1,800 from local option sales tax.
Motion by Taylor, second by Wright. Further discussion before we vote?
Yes. What are the thoughts on concurrently bidding out for a one-year lease in case we miss it, it's not sold? We don't want to lose out on that rent income.
I would be in favor of getting a one-year and no more rental.
My personal, I'd like to see, you know, one month is not the end of the world to me if we lose that much. If we, my worry is this, if we encumber a one-year lease and we go to sale, and that's prohibitive for some, and they say, "Well, I don't want to buy it under a one-year lease. I was planning on planning." And I think that that could be structured, but I'd like to see if there's at least three or four weeks, even if it means missing out on one month, if that makes sense.
But my understanding, not to interrupt you, but my understanding is agriculture, farmers buy their seed by the end of last year to commit to this land going forward. And it might be possible to add X amount of planting seed, you know, for one more year, but I, I don't know. If anything, I'm thinking this is kind of the, not the best time to be bringing up selling it, if we're already talking about renting it out for another cash crop, or cash round, I should say.
When is our lease up right now, Joshua? Do you know the exact?
The current lease expired December 1st, either December 1st or December 31st. So...
So by the time that we got a new lease and went out to bid for that, what would our timeline be potentially?
I think historically, we've advertised it for bids probably in December, January, and received them in January, and had a signed lease late January, early February. Usually, the way the lease is structured is that half of it is due March 1st, and the other half is due December 1st, I believe. And that's fairly typical for agricultural leases. So there, and as part of the lease process, we asked the farmer to provide a letter from their bank, you know, that they're good for and things like that. So there is a fair amount of time that it takes to secure all of that.
Yes, one thought would be, if, let's say we got the appraisal back in 20 days' time and had a meeting with Stalkup Ag and their experience between selling without a lease encumbered upon the buyer versus, you know, whether we structure that as even six months or so on. It may be a matter of 20, 25 days where we have that back and know, based on his analysis and doing this for a living, farm managing, appraising, selling, auctioneering. My only worry is, does that hurt or drop off some people from wanting to take it on, knowing that it's under a lease for one year versus waiting? And maybe it doesn't, but it'll only be a matter of maybe 20 days' time. So I don't know if you all would be willing to wait or defer on that or not.
Yeah.
It's going to depend on the majority, yes.
I could. I mean, maybe that's something he could give a recommendation on as well.
We could let him know times of the essence. We don't really want to wait any longer than we have to already.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Reports on committee meetings. Any meetings since yesterday? Item nine, second round of citizen concerns. Item 10, board concerns. Then we are done with the regular meeting, and we'll proceed with budget review discussion. Commitment to holding the line for taxpayers with approval of 2022, FY 2022 budget savings of 1.4 million, Mr. Zung and Taylor?
Mr. Taylor and I, over the last few days, have looked at the starting position of our budget and seen that it is a very difficult one, for a couple of reasons. First is the normal amount of shortfall we have. I'd say normal is $1 to $2 million that we need to work out if we are going to retain the tax levy at the same rates for a seventh year in a row. The other is the one-year gap in the construction cost of the new LEC. We understand that this was approved by the voters, but at the same time, we also believe we have an obligation to put our best foot forward in saving taxpayer dollars. That gap that we are analyzing here is at least $3.4 million, only for the payment on the law enforcement center. This is before we can realize any revenue from housing outside prisoners from other jurisdictions, which was in the plan that we submitted to the public when this passed. So this is a one- or two-year gap where we need to communicate as a board that the budget is especially difficult to bridge at this point because of this gap, and that this is a gap that was supported, of course, by the board as part of long-term planning, but that the voters ultimately approved, and that takes it out of our hands at this point. This is a cost that we need to encumber in order to build a jail. And so what this item is about is, if all the, if all the subitems are approved, this will save $1.4 million in one week. And this will set up the board to focus its future meetings upon lowering that obligation that remains in the debt service levy due primarily to the $3.4 million gap in funding construction of the jail. With these actions, the levy rate will actually be flat or reduced for general basic, general supplemental, and rural basic. Approval of these actions will save the taxpayer $1,414,274 at the beginning of the budget review process, a major head start during a challenging budget year. This hopefully conveys our, the board's commitment to the taxpayer to, as we say, hold the line as much as possible in any areas that we do control. These are areas we can find operational savings. A lot of these recommendations we've done in previous years, they shouldn't be too controversial when looked at individually. And there has been talk in the background as well about use of county reserves. In order to bridge a gap, this is a serious decision that I don't think we would take lightly. We certainly wouldn't recommend it be taken lightly, but is certainly contingent upon other major advances in the budget, which could only be afforded by something like the sale of a county farm. So I've talked on for a bit. I don't know if Supervisor Taylor wants to kind of go through the items or pick up anything I missed.
Yeah, I think that's a good summation. So essentially, we got the two-year gap where we have to pay the note on the $50 million jail, and yet, we're not able to realize the revenue for those two years from federal prisoners because it's not billed. So I'm appreciative of this agenda item. And then, we had just talked about a potential one and a half to $2 million sale of the county farm. I know that's different, but it's a related topic. So we're trying to look for any and every way to hold the line. So with that, I think if we just kind of take Supervisor Ung, if you're willing, and the rest of the board, kind of take each action as it's listed and discuss it and potentially vote on it, so.
Sure. So we listed these in order of financial impact, and as well as where they're coming from, is again, so we can get these done as part of the budget process and hopefully set us up in week two in a position that in other budget years, we would have taken one or two months to get to, since we've been through this process before. These numbers are from the finance department, sitting down with Dennis over a few days. The first one regards Sealand District Health. They received, as part of the $1.3 million in the CARES Act distribution, their share was $252,174. Dennis reached out to their county department, found that the audited expenses total a 43% reserve level. And this is quite a bit higher than what we've dealt with previously. We've looked at 20, we've looked at 22, we've kind of targeted different levels, and then the board is committed to make them hole up to a certain amount, say 20%. We understand that this is a, obviously, the work they do is more important this year than ever, and so we thought leaving them with a reserve level of 25%, above and beyond what the county has itself, above and beyond what we've targeted in the past, is justifiable. And it also does not, importantly, it does not claw back any of the CARES Act dollars, so we can't say that this action would take back any of the extra $250,000 that was supplied by the law. And so the motion here would be to reduce by $570,224 the allocation to Sealand District Health with the line item associated.
Was that your motion, Mr. Ung?
Yes.
I will second. Motion by Ung, second by DeWitt?
Then Kevin may want to address it.
Yes. Are there any questions or comments from the rest of the board?
Kevin Green, Director at Sealand District Health Department. Just a few things within this. I understand being fiscally responsible, and in the past, as we have worked with our health fund, we have turned over those extra dollars back to the county into general basic. One of the things that strongly alarms me at this point in time is that $252,000 that Supervisor Ung mentioned came in from the CARES Act. I was not aware until Dennis had let me know that that was accrued back to last, which added to this balance that was in there. And I guess what I'm trying to just, at this point in time, we have response work with vaccine distribution and additional expenses that'll be coming up, yet this fiscal year, that at tomorrow's Board of Health meeting, we're looking at amending the budget to be able to utilize some of those funds. And so I'm just kind of raising the awareness of what it is, is that we're going to incur those expenses just related to, and we kind of anticipated the 252 as point, that pool of funds we'd be able to use, because the other part is, I have not been able to determine if we're getting any additional funds to offset our costs relating to those response efforts. So it's, I'm not against the fact of the aspect of what the balance that's in there. I just think the, you know, the amount kind of surprised me as what it would be too, as far as the total. And just wanted to know that if for some reason, we do have a shortage of funds related to the response, it still is the intent to replenish those as far as for future allocation years. Because I think that's some things that we're going to, you know, be dealing with. And so I just wanted to go kind of on the record as to, you know, make that statement is what it was, and create an understanding.
Sure. First off, thank you for what you're doing amidst all of this. I don't think we had a chance to do that, so when you say future allocations to replenish those, what does that look toward? And does that look toward this one year in terms of vaccine distribution? Is that what you're alluding to?
I mean, as we get to that threshold is what it was, what I'm, you know, if we would spend what our amended amount was, which would reduce the, you know, be taking out of the health fund this year, because that's the dollars that are there, that we move forward with the future years is what it is, there may have to be some additional allocations included within it to bring us up to that threshold of the carryover that we agreed upon is what it would be, just because of this transfer, this, the reduction. We will be realizing those expenses. I'd like to say it was going to be done by the June 30th deadline. I don't honestly know the continuing work in it, but I just wanted to kind of make sure that, one of the things I don't want to hit is a wall that says, "We can't do what needs to be done because we don't have the funding." And those are some things too. And the other part is, you know, one of the things is we, you know, the importance of maintaining it is not only for the health fund balance, but we also under a high percentage of our contracts and grants, which allows us to create some of the efficiencies that we have that do cost savings overall. One of the things that if we have any implications related to sort of the reimbursement for the expenses incurred, we rely on this health fund to assure, to make sure that we're cash flow, at least fluent, is what it would be too. So I think that's just another piece, and that's the reason why the health fund exists, and that's a reason there's a balance that needs to be carried, if there would be some interruption in reimbursement.
Do you have any idea right now, based on a projection with the vaccine distribution, what you might need to go down below the 25% or even a dollar amount, generally speaking, for your Board of Health meeting tomorrow?
To be honest with you, no, because we don't, right now, we're trying to work with the network of providers to do at least 50% of the distribution. If that changes because of the vaccine and other changes at the federal or state level, then it puts more responsibility on us to pick up more of that slack as far as the distribution. So it just was, I was, you know, it's kind of looking at as that cushion, that if we needed it, was there and available. So that's kind of where we're at, but...
Looking at the whole picture, as I did with Dennis a few times, our thought process was kind of, if it can prevent use of the county's reserves at this point, we can retain those reserves in case there is a need like that. It doesn't really matter so much to us where the reserves are, as long as there's, there is money if it is needed. And so just choosing to keep that more, you know, matching previous years, so the county's position can be there to help if we need to be.
What, 44% reserve? Is that what you said?
43.
43. And by taking the 570, that puts it down to 25, is what you're saying? So that means there's still probably another like $650,000 in reserve left, correct?
Right.
You'll have 160.
You'll have $160,000 more than the 20%.
Okay. Sure. So he'd still have his 670 or whatever it is reserve?
Yes.
And then, we would still have some left in our county general basic reserve?
Yes, that's what Matthew said, we're saving those reserves for instance, like this, because when you come in next year's budget, we won't have those reserves.
Right.
We're due to allocate, so it's going to jump back up. But we're trying to do something this year, and hopefully, the reserves won't decrease. They might increase a little bit, and that's time to tell.
So Dennis, in your judgment, do we have the reserves between what the county has and what we're leaving into my discussion? Do we have enough reserves to respond to any of that?
As they stand now, even with what Matthew and Jeremy suggest here, using 99, down the road here, we still have enough reserves to cover for next year or even this year.
Sorry. I just wanted to state that, that's to make sure everyone's on the same page with that deal. So, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, or any retractions of any motions or seconds? Not for me. Taken, I'm sorry. No, that's my phone. Item 11, AA. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five to zero.
May I continue with the second?
Yes, sir. Ken.
Number two is noting the commitments made by the Taxpayer Protection Resolution a few years ago, disregarded the use of gaming revenues, which are non-tax supported funds to hold the line on property taxes. In the past, we've used them for equipment replacement and other one-time expenses. Our recommendation here is twofold. The first is to utilize currently available FY21 funds, which are, again, currently available, to use 85,000 of those, and then, as part of the budget process, to allocate 215,000 from the FY22 budget, which we're discussing right now. And so, totaled, that would be 300. As far as a breakdown, we looked at what we have covered in the past, and that made up the bulk of that, 215,000. So this isn't necessarily new money that we're proposing to use. It does still leave approximately $245,000 in the gaming for the next fiscal year, if I remember correctly, and so, we're not emptying this out either. So, the motion would be to transfer from gaming to general basic 85,000 from FY21 carryover funds, and 215,000 from FY22's fund balance.
Dennis, do you have, off the top of your head or paper, FY21 unobligated funds? Is that at 85?
It turns out, 121,000, but we want to leave 30,000 for any expenses that come before the board from now on.
Yeah.
And there'll be money left from the new, you know, new revenues coming in next year. There'll still be money in there available, unobligated, for anything that might come up.
What's your projection for FY22 for gaming?
FY22, we're talking about having about 3, 35,000.
So 360?
Yeah. And we have 75,000 from, we have 75,000 from Kent, Curry River, historical development, heard. That comes on a monthly check every month.
How much?
250, 75,000 here, so you have those two together. Now, we do have some expenses now there, basically, 74,000 for the lease payment on the lease payments for the new facility out there, county center. Also, we have two minor things, but it still leaves money there, so we are draining this drop. We have to have some money for the board to take somebody off to run. Will it, will it?
So this, in our discussion, strikes me as responsible in terms of even the FY21 balance, we don't, you know, drain completely. We still leave maybe 20%, and then, even more so, 35 or 40%. So I think it gives us a little bit of cushion, but it takes seriously what we, I believe, committed to as a board, and bridging the gap.
Anybody have a second?
I motioned.
I'll second.
Motion by Ung, second by Taylor. Any other discussion on this item?
So the percentage of funds used were, what'd you say, we think about 700,000 here? You just, sorry.
Between these two here?
Yeah.
Yeah, total's about 700.
Okay.
Eight hundred and seventy, to be exact.
Okay.
But as money's on hand, we aren't using reserves of really in gaming revenues, and we aren't using any reserves yet out of our general basic fund unless they fall short.
Okay.
So for our reserves, it's not really affecting at all.
And we're leaving about 25% of it in there intact to help whatever make come up?
Things might come up throughout the year.
Okay.
There's always something that comes up. So this is good.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five to zero.
Third item is a motion, which I'll make, to reduce by 294,163 rural basic reserves. This is based upon these reserves being at 31.5% compared to expenses. This is a high level. In looking at the 10-year activity, you could say, we reached a low at about 8% in FY11. And so, our recommendation reduces this, definitely not down to that level, but from 31.5% to 15%.
I'd second.
Dennis, do you want to give a overview of why this may have got to this point?
We did get some, what do I want to say, the CARES Act, we got about 173,000 there. So we're just using up, these are carryovers gradually built up over the year for people not spending their budgets, or some additional revenues that came in. Now, rural basic, there's not a whole, a lot of other revenues that come in, but these are funds that actually build on a rural basis. So the funds are there, it's just, the only word caution I have, I think this should be done, but it's a fix for this year, and next year, we'll handle that. But I don't want people to be surprised next year what happens. But hopefully, this call will scrape out, and we'll get the tax along sometime during '21.
So what, our percent last year we were having us?
31.2%.
All right. And we're going to be down to 15?
Yep.
You're comfortable with that?
That was...
Because what happens is they stay using 25% because they base, you don't gain revenue. You're trying to cover it for the first three months. Well, in reality, the partial payments, there are taxes, other income, it comes more on a monthly basis. We have big search in September, October, March, and April, but yes, it is enough to get through so many year bills.
And that 15% is what dollar amount?
It'll be probably around 15, 250,000.
I motioned.
So we'd have basically another 15% available in gaming or another fund if we had to borrow from that instead too.
True. Or we borrow from general basic reserves because we aren't levying a tax. You can levy tax secondary roads, which is paid on rural basic, on general basic, up to almost 700, 800,000. So with the reserves there, that's our fallback on the general basic. We could put money into rural basic because we can legally levy money against the taxpayers countywide on general basic, but the board chose so far not to do that. So we do have money, we could follow with the general basic.
Did you record the motion in the second for that?
Three, the rural basic reserves?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five to zero.
The fourth item regards the general basic reserves, where a percentage decrease raises a lot more money because of the size. General basic reserves are currently over 18%. A 10-year low was 10.89% in FY15. Following that, it jumped up, what was it, 8% Dennis? So these, it's not as if we set this in the next budget year, we move from that position. If there's just normal underspending in budget line items, we find waste, Mr. Chair, as you're talking about, that complements that picture, and so, we're not necessarily setting that as what is going to be the following year. It could go up. But our recommendation here is a 0.35% reduction. If there was one part of this overall agenda item, which I would say, at least I would be open to reversing and putting money back into the reserves, if we did find throughout the budget process further reductions in general basic, as we will, going through this process, then that's something we can look at, so we're not impacting it as much. This is a very minimal impact upon these reserves. They're over 18%. That's, you know, quite a bit higher than the 10-year low, and it's something we feel comfortable recommending, and, you know, in large part, so that we can just, as a board psychologically, at the beginning, say that we have reduced the levy rates in general basic, general sup, and rural basic. And for the public's information, that, those are the main funds that the board has operating authority over, so we can say that we have reduced the tax rates in the main areas where the board controls, and we will spend the rest of our time looking at things that we have less control over. So with that, I'll motion to reduce by $99,887 general basic reserves.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Taylor on the item. Any other comments or questions?
Can I just ask you, Supervisor Ung? So essentially, if I heard you right, we're, by these series of motions, we're going to keep flat the levies in general basic, supplemental, rural basic, across the board?
Correct.
But we have looming out there still debt service.
That's correct.
And debt service is inordinately large this year because we're taking on the largest expense in 30 years with the county jail, and that gap still remains to be potentially taken by sale of the county farm, or something else, or other items that we might creatively come forward to try to bridge in this one or two-year gap. Is that a fair?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
On a percentage, yeah, that's a question for a later time. I was going to ask, what is the lowest comfortable percentage of reserves? But this is kind of a moot point here.
Yeah, I would say we would cross that bridge if and only if we achieve great savings from other areas throughout the budget process.
Well, my point is, I'd not be comfortable seeing where we were a few years ago when you said we're only at 10.8% or whatever.
Right.
That's not a comfortable spot to be in.
And that was an example, sorry to interrupt, of the previous year, it was higher, and then a dip lower because of different spending mechanisms, so.
Okay. Let's see, did you get the motion in the second, Mr. Gill? Okay, any other questions or comments on this item?
I guess, what dollar amount does that leave on two on that? What dollar amount does that leave in reserves?
It'll be close to 5 million, 4.8, between 4.8 and 5 million.
Okay.
You're already reducing 3500 to 1%.
Right.
But accomplishes what we're trying to do here.
Sure thing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five to zero.
Fifth item is regarding secondary roads. They're required by the Department of Transportation to fund a minimum levy, as it's called. It gets very complex, but basically, what it means is if we don't levy for them a certain amount, they will lose dollar-for-dollar money from other outside governments. And so, we definitely do not want to dip below that, because then we're losing out on that dollar-for-dollar benefit. So our recommendation does not affect this. It is a reduction. It's, there is, there would be room to reduce it even more, and potentially not impact that, but we wanted to play a little bit safer than we had originally talked about with Dennis. So the motion here is to reduce by $90,000 the rural basic levy for secondary roads.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Taylor.
That's the question on that, is Mark know about this, and where, you know, he likes to have that cushion, so that if he doesn't quite make it there, he never tries to fully spend it, you know, but he wants to make sure he spends what we're required to get the match.
It does leave a little bit of a cushion. Do you know, Dennis, what exactly that?
He had a plan without, he had planned 200,000 on general basic, but even without that, it'll be 76.1%, or 5%, 76.5%, but with this reduction, it'll still be 75.1. Now, this year, we got 2.3 million with our estimates of the state of census, plus the money he had got, we got a reconciliation payment in November, 333,000, which was large compared to our reconciliation of 80,000, 90,000 for previous two years.
Where's that money? Where's that?
That money goes into secondary roads, so he probably actually got more, 75% in fiscal year, this current fiscal year '21. So he's kind of uncomfortable because we're really getting fine lined, and hopefully, we do get all this local option money, which I feel we will, through the estimates that they have provided us, and I don't anticipate a $300,000 payment, again, the reconciliation, if we get 90,000 to 100,000, we should be fine. And again, this is why reserves, and Matthew's got back to that, this is why we want to save our reserves in general basic, and now we're talking about covering potentially, if he does come 175%, we'll have to transfer tax dollars, reserves, or to rural basic or secondary roads, and be at 75%. But that's remained to be seen down the road. So yes, this can be done. He didn't like to cut this close. I talked to him about an hour, I thought he might even be here, but he didn't make it, but he thinks it's close, but we just have to go with it. We want to hold the line here, we have to do something.
Is cushion about 100,000? Is this cushion then about 100,000? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, 75%, uh, 1/10 to 1% will be his cushion for 75%.
I didn't get that. My mind didn't work as fast as, your question was 110, and your answer was?
1/10 to 1%. I'm talking dollar amount, you're talking percentage.
Yeah, I don't have the dollars. He figures that out, he has a formula where he takes all this countywide levies times the certain tax rate, and the rural maximum he can levy on a rural basic. The reason we don't levy a maximum is because of local sales tax, which was passed by the board as long ago, to dedicate 80% of local options. So I don't exactly know the number, I just know it's 75.1%, which is cutting kind of tight, but what we're trying to do here, is get to a point where we feel we're safe, we do have reserves to back it up, and that's coming from Matthew, and I agree with Matthew, that's why you have to protect the general basic reserves. We're talking about district health now, we're talking about possibly secondary roads, so it's just a safeguard. Now, I don't know what happens when he gets maybe to levy with additional 300,000, his minimum support could be probably maybe 77, 78, 79, but you can't carry it forward. That's the problem.
I'm still comfortable with it, with budgeting itself being a moving target.
Yes. Now, come next June, I might be, I don't know, drive, but still, I'm going to go.
It's your idea.
No. We'll have to increase the budget for Diet Mountain Dew, is that right? Increase the budget for Diet Mountain Dew?
Yeah.
I think you're speaking to an important point. Many of these actions are...
Many of these actions are not taken in isolation. Personally, I've spent dozens of hours with Dennis in the mornings. I know other people are spending time in Dennis's office. These decisions are not being made independently of the county's expert in the area of finance. So we are seeking counsel, the wise counsel of the person who is responsible to kind of know at the end of the day what our wisest choices are not.
And there's kind of a lot of hours of discussion overall of these here. But they all have a decision in mind right up here.
I think we have a motion in a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item F.
Uh, the sixth item is regarding the improvement requests from the county auditor's office for an FTE. Typically, I like to see these improvement requests come at the end of a, end of the budget discussion so that we, we know where we're at and we look at it as an addition, because it is an addition, rather than as part of the overall picture. So this is kind of procedural. But this would in effect move this items consideration to the end of the budget reviews when we have a firmer grasp on where the budget is and perhaps have found other savings. And so the motion is to remove the sixty-one thousand five hundred fifty-four dollar auditor's office improvement request for an FTE, placing it at the end of the reviews. And this is the only, to my knowledge, FTE improvement request.
And I, I think this is a reasonable motion. We've done it both ways, budget-wise, just for the good of the board. We talked initially about a hiring freeze unless a department head or elected official could demonstrate that there was either an emergency, a state mandate, or would be a degradation in service. This credit Supervisor Young suggested going this route rather than just stating that, which I think is probably fairer in terms of making sure that, or open to the discussion, but just need to make sure that we hold the line first and foremost, so.
Waiting a second.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Taylor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
The seventh item regards the allocation of the self liability fund. This pays for obviously liability issues and legal issues. We've allocated anywhere generally in the neighborhood of a million dollars, down to nine hundred, one point one million one year. This is typically expended throughout the year. And the current allocation before this step is taken was set at nine hundred thousand dollars of tax dollars going into this fund. However, looking at where we are at this point in the year, as the agenda item states, we're about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, as Dennis would say, to the good on, on this line item. And so we believe there's a little room here. Didn't want to get too aggressive since you never know when you're going to need this, but it does continue to fund and realize that we have more in this, in this fund than we did last year. So the motion is to reduce by sixty thousand dollars the allocation of the self liability fund, leaving an allocation of eight hundred forty thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Motion by Young, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
The eighth and final item is a quote lateral move. It does not directly impact tax dollars. But in order for us to communicate that we have reduced the levy in these three funds, this is a move that is instrumental for that reason, but also I think it just makes sense. Currently, we, we assign uniform patrol sergeants or deputies to general basic or rural basic. We state that given the unnecessary focus of the sheriff's office on rural law enforcement outside of primarily Sioux City, it is fair and reasonable to move two of these deputies from general basic to rural basic. And we looked at a couple of these positions, including wages and benefits totaling a certain amount. And so the motion is to move one hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred fourteen dollars from Uniform Patrol Division in general basic to rural basic.
So it splits about thirteen and twelve, is that?
Yeah, it's.
Thirteen to general and twelve to rural, is that?
Yeah, it was roughly equivalent before this move, Dennis? And do you know exactly how many or?
First year, we had fourteen on general basic, ten out of rural basic. Next year, we had fifteen on general basic and ten out of rural basic. So that reduces thirteen and twelve.
So basically, the budget proposal for this year was to assign an extra employee to the general side.
Out of the total.
Out of the total, yep. Yep. And this is just kind of correcting that move, you could say, and at least splitting it more evenly. And obviously, it's, the focus is on the rural and a lot of what the office does.
Did we gain one person?
No. They're shifting from our department division off the, let's see, they went up one sergeant. So they, a sergeant from their division went over to your book.
Gotcha.
And they've done some restructuring, but did not increase the total number of deputies.
Okay. Yeah, I like the fifty-fifty split, thirteen, twelve, makes sense.
Is that the new math?
Yeah.
Motion by Young, second by DeWitt. Any further questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item eleven B would be general relief administration.
Okay, Dave.
Aye. Of course I made it.
General relief in your tab needs to allow automatic elected officials first and department second. So it is about halfway through your book, the tab general relief.
Also, I'll be putting the lines up on the board and if you have access to your, um, meeting, you know, for very long.
Should be general relief kind of correct.
Administration.
Administration.
It's about three quarters away. And this is actually divided into two budgets. One is just an allocation for administrative services. The other one is allocation for assistance to individuals. So on page one of that tab, it's a twenty-six thousand nine fifty. That has been the same for the last several years. There have been no increase or decrease in that.
Well, actually, that helps us process applications that we get for people. Helps us do the paperwork, the monthly reporting and the applications.
Any comments or questions for Mrs. Logan?
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions?
Are you, are you receiving all these?
Are, are we just doing one division?
That way, when we get to the end, you can look and see if you got cut anymore. We've always received in the past years.
He moved to receive.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
General relief.
Excuse me? Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Assistance, general basic.
That was left the same. Uh, yours before is eighty-six thousand, this year it's three thousand. A lot of that comes at the end of fiscal year when aid runs out from other sources. It's kind of a fallback to help out people.
I, I'd actually like to just spend a couple of minutes walking you through what this year looks like so far. We received a lot of CARES Act money and we have also been taking advantage of the state's CARES Act money, which was able to pay for rent and for utilities and water for a lot of people. So we were directing people to apply for those programs. You could get thirty-two hundred dollars in rental assistance and up to two thousand in utility or water assistance through the end of this year. So you'll see, I, I show that we've spent thirty-eight thousand. We probably haven't turned in everything in yet, which is well under normally where we are. But general assistance or general relief money is the funding of last resort. So we're going to use every program and every resource that we can before we touch this money. And that's why it's so low. The anomaly would be that we did spend almost thirteen thousand dollars in rental assistance. Several years ago, you had given us permission to match federal money. And so by that, we can help people with a program called the Emergency Shelter Grant. There was additional COVID money related that we could write a grant for, we got it. I need this to match that, that, that money with, and that's why we spent thirteen thousand there. The shocking figure for all of us, and I think it happened to us too, we knew we were busy this last six months, but we have buried twenty-one, which is more than an annual number for us most of the time. And I'll tell you today, we have four more pending. So we've already spent, most of what I've spent is over twenty-four thousand so far at the end of the year for burials. You, the county pays up to a hundred percent. I am using community services block grant money to help families up to a hundred twenty-five percent. And when that CARES Act money is gone, we won't be able to help those individuals anymore that fall between that gap. I just wanted you to be aware of this. I don't know how long our CARES Act money will last. I know they just passed another bill. I don't think we're getting any more of that as an agency. If we can apply, we will. There will be a rental program that will assist residents in the state that they have not released the details about. So I'll, you know, obviously, I will use every other resource I can, but the burials especially are going to be really hard for us to predict.
If this money isn't spent, Dennis, it goes back into reserves? Okay, okay.
If the party does spend a hundred percent, all of that can be reserved. That's not something we can get reserved anymore.
Do you have other questions for me?
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ray. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Uh, comes, comes the supervisors section in your budget book. And we'll jump around pages here, start right from page seven two. And this involves solving waste on the landfill. And I believe Rocky, there's two, two members of the board on that commission, right?
Uh, it was Marty and I.
I think I have to take Marty's place.
Yeah. Think I know who it is.
We signed, the commission did sign agreement with Gil Holling. That has since, agreement is still good, but Gil Holling has been sold, still a future. Polls whether to keep the same or go up where we are in our contract, where you are allowed to. They were allowed a three percent increase, so going to three hundred twenty-three thousand three twenty, three percent increase. And the rent per capita, what that is, last year, the commission out there at landfill told Mr. Gill's operation out there, they did not have to pay the rent anymore because they're running into financial constraints a little bit on operating landfill. So we now do it by per capita. Our share of that is twenty-five thousand two fifty-eight. The only way that will change is if there's a new census that comes out, but who knows when that's going out. So based on the current census that we have available, and the two twenty-three, it went up two point six nine percent total. But three percent of that was a contractual agreement with landfill and Gil Holling.
How long is that agreement, Goodford?
Three year, three or five year.
I think it's three, if three sounds right.
We're in the middle of that right now.
I guess this is the second year. I think we got one more year, then it'll be applied to new owners, what happens there and the commission.
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Okay, now go back to page three, which in this section here is miscellaneous refunds. And this particular one, miscellaneous refund for twenty thousand is a budget twenty thousand that we get in. Twenty thousand goes out. Sometimes it's maybe lower, sometimes it's maybe higher, but some money is coming towards. The second one, the tax rebates, where we have this item here, general basic, we'll also have it back in rural basic. In this case, we're talking about general basic, this is our share of the excise tax that CF Industries pays on their gas lines going in. The volume goes through it. And last year, six hundred eighty-one thousand, this year, six hundred ninety-six thousand. This agreement is good till the end of the payment schedule. So this will be paying out every year for the next, well, till two thousand thirty-five. So this goes on. We are the only entity, but under this agreement, naturally, green burst, agreed to green burst. We could not control school, this, excise, glove, or anybody else. This is the only one we can do. So we're obligated to this. And I talked to one supervisor, did you realize they had obligated us to this kind of agreement? I showed him the contract or the development agreement, it's right there, black and white. So this is something we have to do.
Former supervisor or?
Yes.
Yeah.
None of our current supervisors were here when they did this agreement. But we're stuck with it till two thousand thirty-five. So whoever's around in that year, you'll have a little windfall if you want to budget for this. I would be, if you guys.
Matthew's the youngest.
And that takes care of the rebates.
Move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions for Dennis or others? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
So item number three, we actually did cover already on a general basic, rural basic, U of A sixty-seven. You can see there, the rebate there amounts to two hundred fourteen thousand nine sixty-seven compared to two thirty-five. Five thirty-one is current. So that actually went down a little bit because of the levy rate going down on rural basic. But that's just to let you know what these CF rebates are, that we have to bug them, and they're going to fund effectively.
All move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Reddick. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Public bidder, page thirty-two, thirty-three. Thirty-two, revenue's coming in, and thirty-three, our expense are going out. And they seem left to the same except the public sales. We did drop that to five thousand, like five hundred. That's kind of how our main sales can get through with public sales, it's been down.
Heather Satterwhite, Board Administration. The pandemic affected public bidder as well. We were not, due to the governor's proclamation, we weren't able to work on any property. That means even trying to obtain deed to the property, sell property. I kind of work in spurts, where I'll work for a couple of months on trying to get deed. And then I'll work on my sales. And it just drastically affected public bidder that way, too. So I'm just starting to get caught up again. But yeah, for quite a few months, we weren't able to touch anything. I mean, I couldn't send. I mean, I couldn't send out any notices to anybody, just because, you know, they put the proclamation and they extended the property tax due dates. So once they extended that, due to the proclamation, we were not able to send out a notice saying, hey, you've got ninety days to where I'm going to take your property. We just couldn't do that.
Things go good, we have more revenue, again, additional revenue goes back to reserves.
Move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Next one is mail services, page thirty-four. This year increased by eight thousand, we're still being, we're allowing mailing because of COVID nineteen. Now, we've got to remember, this is a budget year from five first of one-one, being thirty-twenty-two. Hopefully, things will be calmed down, this may not be the necessary more we're going to spend, but we don't spend, it goes back in reserves. And Karen, do you have any comments on this line? And maybe we'll go back down, right now, we spent thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand already. Or thirty-six thousand, sorry, seventy-two, sixty-eight, well, the reason it may go down, COVID is the vaccine, everything going good? What?
What is that line I was for?
Mail services, we're doing a lot more mailing now.
Oh, yeah.
Because of COVID.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ray. Don't like to see those big increases in numbers, but at least it's only eight thousand dollars for a twelve and a half percent increase. But as you said, Dennis, it goes back to reserves, so it's unspent?
Correct, we don't spend it, and we're actually having to tax it, we don't give reverse for postage, so what we don't spend goes back.
Okay, any other questions?
How does, maybe it's apparent to everybody else, but how does COVID affect the amount of postage?
Um, we're just doing more mailing. Instead of people coming in, we have to mail things back out to them, instead of them picking items up.
Okay.
It was mainly due to the treasures office, I would say that was where the big dent was at. Either when they were closed physically, or people just not being able to, or not wanting to, there was just more mailings. And it was mainly with treasures, and, I mean, they were closed for a full two weeks, and
Thank you.
That's where I seen the biggest increase. And I'm sure that affected plenty of other departments, too, as far as people not coming into buildings.
Do you anticipate the downturn synonymous with the uptick this year? Because we had to respond to COVID, and COVID is no longer something we're dealing with, do you expect next year this number will?
Twenty-one, two, twenty-one, twenty-two, I say from July versus June, twenty-two, this thing's under control. It's anybody's guess.
So twelve and a half percent increase this year because of COVID, but next year, we anticipate that.
Three thousand.
Sure.
But we got to make sure we do have enough money there to cover enough of this.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Next one is district court operations. We do give re, this includes a mail and parking. We provide, we do give, includes telephone, expensive parking, and we do give reverse for the telephone from the state. Solar's a water, we have twenty-three thousand income in, twenty-three thousand went up, parking, we do pay for the judges and the court administrators' parking. That's what's included in forty-five. Only question I have is, I know the board agreed to the parking for the judges, but I didn't know they agreed to parking for the court administrator. Because that's a state function. We did, they did, okay.
Do you recall when, what year?
A couple of years, a couple of years.
So there's nothing that we can do here, the money's in and out, essentially, is that what I'm?
Except for the parking, we know we have reverse for parking. But the board did agree to it, I mean, the acting with the plan for here, the LEC, everything, and the board did agree to that plan.
So in the future, more of the operations moved out there, would we still have the same parking costs?
Um, depends on the judges.
Sure.
You know, if the judge is permanently going out there, but the way I understand it, they won't have court every day, district court there, so I assume that the parking still will be here for the judges. And I don't know, they have to move that building out there, behind the LEC, it'll free up a couple of parking places there. That's why it became an issue, parking places disappeared when they put the contamination building there to monitor, the monitoring building. I understand that isn't being used anymore, but there have been no decisions to move it out, or they need to leave it there, there's something plugged in there. That did take up two or three parking places, that's why they moved it over here.
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Okay, next one is court appointed, juvenile attorneys, next page, page forty. And this, I actually decreased the business dollars on attorney fees because this is the base we pay. And you'll know, when I paid two thirty-eight, two thirty-nine, so it's three hundred thousand each this year, hopefully it's two thirty-nine, fifty thousand will go back in reserves. But also, we can cut it back next year to two fifty to make it more realistic.
Yeah, but this was something we increased last year, right?
Yes.
Anticipating potential increase, and it probably was.
But the base didn't change that much. So two fifty, that's fifty thousand reduction. Uh, mental health institute, or mental health care attorney fees, I left out of fifty thousand, and the others, I reduced, attorney fees to fifty, left the mental health attorney fees the same. You know, the mental health attorney fees, that could go up this year, but it's been a lot of problems with COVID related, mental health.
But if we're only at fourteen-eight so far this year?
Correct.
And we've been in COVID for?
Now, that may be our December first, the year before, it's been fifty-seven, how, you go back one year, so.
How about the year before that?
This fiscal year twenty, there was fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four expended. Fiscal year nineteen, we over expended, the budget was forty thousand, and there was sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-two expended.
And this is a fund that we don't have big reserves, our reserve in general is up twelve point two percent, I believe. So that's one of the reasons we didn't use reserves, we're discussing all of this. We need to protect a little bit, so if the money isn't spent, it does help put some money back in reserves, because we're very low in the general side. So I'd suggest we leave it.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Young. Any other discussion, or? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Next page, forty-three, we've already accomplished this, we did reduce this in the motions that Jeremy and Matthew brought forward, reduced that by, I believe it was ninety, ninety?
Sixty.
So that one will go from nine hundred thousand down to eighty-four, reduction sixty thousand, that one's already been handled, due to the above motions made on the first section.
So we don't need any?
Do anything on that.
Okay.
Okay, it's received.
Move to receive.
Second.
Uh, motion by Taylor, second by Reddick. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
The next one would be soil conservation, page sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-one. And this is where we take hard expenses, expenses, uh, with soil conservation, Joey out there, he's told how much all the potential dams out there, queen dice things like that, he can explain further. They're asking the same amount of money, I believe.
Hi, see, I'm Kelly Ingen, thrown in from the Woodbury County Soil and Water Board. We've requested thirty-nine thousand to help in the maintenance of the Woodbury County Watershed Program, which is the same amount as we received last year. The maintenance is mainly to water control structures, which is, which is dams mostly. We have over four hundred and fifty dams in Woodbury County, the vast majority of them are close to fifty years old. We're hoping with the proper maintenance, we can make them last another fifty years. Anybody have any questions?
This is funded through lost money, it's our program in there. Which is lost, does save rural basic thirty-nine thousand, but it's already programmed, we've done this last several years. It saves the debt.
Unspent goes where? What is unspent?
It's all spent.
It's all spent. We pay them, we pay them four times a year, I believe, quarterly payments, and then at the end of the year, I transfer some book option over to rural basic to supplement the funds we used there.
Motion by DeWitt. To receive.
Second.
Second by Reddick. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is county medical examiner, page seven, eight. Seven is the revenue, but we raised it from two thousand, five thousand, hopes that some of these counties reverse, that's Iowa County two is a little bit low. Fairly good, I believe, it's the office, eight, two, not reverses, and there's nothing we can do about it. Even if they, you know, go before the medical examiner, other states like Nebraska, they're not reverses, so we still got paid off. But this county dentist thing, I do believe, they do reverse it, so we do get some reverses. But I did raise this up to two hundred and sixty thousand, from one hundred and ninety-one, go back to past history, twenty, nineteen, and twenty fiscal year, we spent two hundred and fifty-eight thousand this year. I think, talking ahead of time here, their costs were about thirty-five percent, so sixty-nine thousand increase, and we hope that's enough. So like I say, if we can't control deaths, and deaths, she explained this, deaths are up quite a bit. It requires autopsies.
Can you go back to what were the previous years that you were mentioning?
Nineteen dash twenty, fiscal year twenty is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two forty-six. This year, when this book is printed, sixty-six thousand already, and I know that's higher.
This is up to date on the screen, it's eighty-six thousand, seven ninety-three of this tax expenses. The prior year balances the current expenses.
What was nineteen?
I'm Julie Bryner, the medical examiner for the county, and I apologize, the, the number I gave you, the thirty-five percent increase in volume reflected a calendar year of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Not your fiscal year, which I can certainly recalculate and let you know what the volume increase was for fiscal year.
Eighteen, probably.
Might be.
Yeah, the way things are going, because
Might be.
suicides are up, unfortunately. And there's been a few homicides lately.
Right.
Price of dying is going up.
Deaths are up overall, yes, you're correct, with, with a homicide on the first day of the new year, so. Otherwise, our, our fees have not changed, I know that doesn't help you, but.
Fiscal year nineteen activities were one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy dollars.
So just so I'm understanding, nineteen was one eighty-nine, twenty was two fifty-eight, but if you double where we're at right now, we're at about one seventy-three.
And same by the end of the year, we have a lot more expenses coming in, we start accruing this back. But we changed the billing cycle, where I think that is semester bills within thirty to sixty days, from the medical examiner to the office, the board office.
And we're asking for how much this year?
Two hundred and, this year, one hundred and ninety-one, or go to two sixty next year.
And I guess my question, I mean, it's not unlike what we did with the MHI attorney, at least raising the question. If we went from one eighty-nine to two fifty-eight, and now doubling where we're at currently, we're at one seventy-three, why are we going up to two sixty? We haven't hit two sixty in three years, and on a three-year average, right now, we would be at something like two hundred or two ten.
We can drop sixty thousand, but if they come in with more costs, we're going to have to mend the budget, come up with reserves. Yeah, I agree, it can be reduced.
I, I would rather do that, I mean, I don't.
I guess that's why you're, we're trying to hold it back on reserves, because we've come about three to four different things already to date, and if funding falls short, that's the only option we've got. So that can be dropped sixty thousand.
I'd rather do that, I mean, the three-year, even if you look at just this year, the, just this year, we'd be at a hundred and seventy-five, or a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five eighty-six, FY twenty-one doubled. Being at two, two hundred, or even two ten. I don't want to over budget, I mean, if our goal is to start making the necessary reductions it's going to have to take, I don't like having reserves within reserves, if that makes sense, and cushions within cushions, you know.
Is that, if you figure two, you know, twenty thousand a month, though, it'd be about two forty, it's still a reduction.
I'm just going on, this year, I don't think we're going to exceed one seventy-five. At least if you take the first half of the year and put it to the second half of the year. And does this include January? How up to date?
Up to date, so probably, like, January, unless, I think they've got some off of desk.
Yeah, um, I would say, uh, the most recent invoices I've received for transport and pathology sitting on my desk is probably twenty thousand, that needs to be processed.
Okay, so the one seventy-three with twenty, could be up to two hundred?
Current activity.
Two hundred, two hundred and twelve thousand.
Eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three. And then twenty on top of that would be current for January.
Now, the transport brings a question, we've been paying a lot more on transport lately, like, a lot more, is that, what, what's going on there?
We're already at twenty-one thousand for current activity.
This, do I need, do I need to start my own transport business here, or is that?
That'd be great.
Transporting dead bodies, is that what it is?
Especially in rural areas.
Then I couldn't do it.
Well, as I understand, we've got someone from the sheriff's office working on this, or looking into this, or trying to get some miscommunications and?
Harrison and Armstrong are looking at it, as far as rural ones go. My take so far is that when there is an accident in Slone, and the volunteer fire department is unavailable, they've been going to Midwest Medical. I was suggesting contacting them to see if we can work out some sort of a contract with them, because one of the latest bills I received was fourteen hundred dollars for one transport.
That was from Mercy One, Two, seven, fourteen hundred dollars.
Right.
We are willing to work with the.
Maybe I would be willing to drive around with a dead person in the car. Sorry.
Dr. Carol did it once. Seriously.
Will you contact Midwest then, and ask them if they'd be amenable to talking to one or two board members and seeing what we can work out?
I've been in contact with, I don't know if it's Idol, but I've been in contact with somebody there regarding our filling, and several have been willing to work with the county. They kind of got thrown into it, I think, um, then, Sealan Paramedic has been out of the business. They would go rule, but now, contractor is with Sioux City Fire Rescue, and obviously, that's going to be within city limits. And they charge us three hundred and fifty dollars per transport, and that is from hospital to hospital, from resident's death to the hospital, it's just three hundred and fifty dollars. When we had SBI, it was a flat twelve thousand dollar charge, I don't know how many bodies they transported, so you're
A year.
Yeah, in fiscal eighteen, when our activity was like thirteen thousand dollars, now we're already at twenty-one this year, so. Now we're already at twenty-one this year, so.
Well.
Heard this when Zealand Paramedics shut down.
Well, there's other transport services in town, too, we might have to look around. I think the twisted part in my mind, thought of a like Weekend at Bernie's Uber type situation, but, you know. No, there's other transport companies that.
But I think also the conversation with Mercy One also, who do they call to transport first? I said, so instead of calling the one to fourteen, or let's call one for three.
Well, that's a mistake on the hospital's part on contacting that provider, wasn't it?
We're unclear as to why we're keeping contacting Midwest.
Well, all right, I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and settle this dollar amount, and then we'll work in conjunction, I'll work with Heather. And getting.
Can I ask a question?
From here.
So I'm new to the game, sorry, Sheriff Chashean. Does it have to be a medical unit that does the transport? There has to be some sort of, I know, blood and body fluid training. There are, there are some training issues for it, but it doesn't have to be an ambulance, it doesn't have to be a hearse. So, well, that's what I was wondering, is there, is it a possibility to see if there's any of the funeral homes that might be out in the rural area that would be willing to train? I mean, it's not like they're being worked on in the ambulance. Is there a way that we might have a funeral home in Mobile, or Sergeant Bluff, or somewhere that says, hey, we'll, you know, we'll come out and train? They do it if they die in your home. So I just, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as a, they might do it for much less than what, than what those medical providers who are, you know, trying to make. And I'm not blaming them, they're trying to make money because they're running a business, and not funeral homes wouldn't, but I would think if, that might be an option to look at at least, and if you need help, we can certainly have somebody else there. I just, I didn't know what the requirements were. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't really make sense if we can provide like the whole funeral program through general assistance earlier on for cheaper than what we're getting the transport for a dead body, you know.
They certainly have the equipment to.
To do so.
Every day.
Mr. Chair. You had mentioned settling the dollar amount, I'd like to move two hundred and ten. Because if we go with the one seventy-three that doubled, plus the twenty that's sitting on your desk, even then, we're not above two twelve. And I just think if we're going to match on at least a three-year average, I'd move a fifty thousand reduction.
My only concern is if, if, if the transports are already this high, that we'll be revisiting this sooner than later. I'd be, I'd be a little more comfortable with, as Mr. Raddig said, twenty thousand a month, two thirty, two forty range. Just to possibly offset that, because I, I mean, I, I, I think we can go to the, to a little higher number, but.
I'm good with the two-ten, I think, you know. I, I just think we'll, we'll, we'll get something figured out on transport, I just don't think. Now, is that under you, Heather? Or how are we going to solve this? Because that's, I mean, or is that through the medical examiner's office with Julie here?
Me and Julie work together.
Okay.
All the time.
Because I know, you know, he brings up a great point, I know a few people that run funeral homes, maybe they'd want the business, because I think they'd probably see three hundred bucks for transporting a body as a good deal, rather than, you know, fourteen hundred or whatever to go six blocks transporting a body, so.
Well, I don't want to get in the habit of speaking for businesses that are trying to make a living, but is that your motion at two-ten?
It is.
Is that your second at two-ten? Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. For two hundred and ten thousand, reducing by fifty thousand? Correct, yes, sir.
Fifty thousand, can we go have the liberty to go in and spread this out between the line items? Because you're taking fifty thousand off the total, but there's actually five line items there. Can we have the liberty to go in, in conversation with Heather, they're going up just these lines, the total, fifty thousand?
Yeah, we give you the liberty. And thank you for what you do, Julie, because I could not do it.
You come from with that, the way he worded that?
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
I have one after here.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Julie, do you want to talk just very briefly, I know it's not an agenda item, but do you want to just mention anything about the morgue or our conversation?
Certainly, a couple of years, almost two years ago, St. Luke's approached a few board members with plans to, their plan and intent to destroy basically the, the building that the current morgue is housed in. It's the old Easter Seals Hospital, the old St. Luke's Daycare on the corner of Douglas and Twenty-Ninth. The only thing the building houses is the morgue currently, and it's got asbestos, it's, you know, inefficient, it's only used for the morgue. And the hospital has plans, I think they might have already sold the property, or sold that piece of it, and there are plans to build on that site, so they need to move the morgue. So the intent is to bring the morgue, to move it on the St. Luke's campus. And they've been speaking with construction firms locally, and an architect to draw up plans and to get bids within the current facility to move the morgue, the morgue setup. And they, they let me know that the bid they got was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move, to move the morgue. And they're looking at a joint venture with the county to fund that, so.
And just saying, what I had suggested potentially, I think it was a couple of years ago, I don't know, was it you and me, Rocky, that sat down?
We spent a lot of time up there, yeah.
Yeah, and so maybe to re-engage with a couple of supervisors in terms of that. And I talked to Joshua today just on what the county statutory rule is, and it sounds like it's a little bit gray. A county may participate in a construction, doesn't have to necessarily, but obviously if ninety-plus percent of the autopsies are done in support of the medical examiner rather than the hospital, bottom line is maybe something to engage in outside of this budget review, but while Julie was here, I just thought.
Right.
Yeah, at least bring it up.
Yes.
For awareness.
Out of curiosity then, on the morgue space itself, how much is used for the hospital patients that transferred rooms versus people that we have using spaces?
By ninety to ninety-five percent are medical examiner or county cases. The, the need for, or the request for hospital autopsies is extremely low, we might have had one.
Is the morgue only for people in autopsy limbo, or is that?
The cooler space where we store bodies is, some of the hospital patients do go to the morgue, into the cooler if the funeral home can't, can't pick them up right away.
Okay.
So we kind of look at it differently, we look at the cooler space differently than we look at the morgue, or the actual autopsy suite, so.
So will the cooler space be combined with the morgue essentially?
Yes, that's part of the whole, the whole bid.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think the current cooler we have is, they told us it was thirty-some years old, and it's, it's on its last leg, I mean, it's having trouble keeping temperature and things like that. But, so, yeah, the, the cooler is part of that entire amount.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starcom.
We're requesting move that to February second, when we have to do the comm center budget. They don't have their board meeting, this was an estimate, so it might be more accurate, we should probably wait till February second, the board meeting's February, January thirteenth on the comm center, and so, and the comm center's somewhat in conjunction with the city also, these times have been, and it's like North Sioux, things like that. So defer that to February second.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddig, second by Taylor, to defer the item, Starcom program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Five to zero.
Next one, Sheriff Train Center, page fifty-five to fifty-seven. On page fifty-five, that's actually our lease payment. There's a view there for its finance group. Has been, because they're equal payments four times a year. On page fifty-six, I include the schedule of payments, so you see when you, what they're funded by, and also it shows that two thousand and twenty-two, which is this figure, twenty-two, twenty-three, October nineteenth is our last payment. So we actually have after this year, six payments ago. Four next year, two the following fiscal year, and we got two this year, one coming up very soon.
It is what it is, isn't it?
Yep.
I'll move to.
And halfway through fiscal year twenty-three, which would be, boy, oh, we'll drop it in half, what we have to allocate. So what that will do, we'll save gaming revenue, because we're funding on gaming revenue. Something looks forward to, it's a year and a half away.
And that center looks great.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero, thank you.
Next one, township also on page seventy-three. In this case here, the drop is one thousand, previous year was fifty-one hundred. They all turn in their bills at the end of the fiscal year, when they actually do the budgeting. So between March fifteenth and the end of the year, we'll get all of the bills. So that's why you don't see much expended now, so we went from seven to six, reduction one thousand.
Do we know what nineteen was? Do we know what fiscal year nineteen was?
Nineteen activity was five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six.
How easy is to look back one year in past? Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Nineteen was seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three.
Okay, thank you.
What does that, is that like reimbursement for expenses?
Other wages, basically, which the board does that, the township trustees are set by the board, and also the perp is paid on an hourly basis.
Okay.
So I don't think the actual rate to the, or trustees has been changed for a while, hasn't it?
Hasn't it?
I think it's fifteen dollars a week.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five. And of course reversed on an hourly basis.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
The next one is page eighty. These are just two, two items that the board has been compiling. We have a group from the middle one, which is twenty thousand a year, next year will be the third payment on that, so.
That'll drop off.
That'll drop off, and you won't have to budget fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-one, twenty-two, yes, that's our last payment. The event center, that'll be payment number three of ten, or it'll be payment number four of ten, I'm sorry. Payment number four of ten, a hundred and fifty thousand, so we have six more years of that. So it's just basically approved, although we have approved them, we already approved the expenditure received, the expenditure every year.
So the initiative in the fairgrounds, are those two kind of automatic?
Yes. Are they what?
Kind of automatic.
Yes.
Some beer, mine, sorry.
It's just that you approve in the next year, but even though they're automatic.
Are we still getting that position, economic development position out of the initiative? Because it was ten thousand, I think we went up fifteen for that reason, was it not?
That is not it. We have fifteen next year, that's part of a project they did this year.
Okay.
It's a fifteen of fifty, fifteen this year, fifteen next year. They will be coming forward, and they're all venture here, but they're going to come in and talk to you during budget time, so we can budget for it.
Can somebody remind me what Iowa's West Coast is?
That's the advertising kind of marketing of the Missouri River side of the state. We, we.
Iowa's West Coast.
I think that's sort of rural economic, isn't it, development?
Well, we, we fund that through here, and.
Well, it's handled, I mean, administrated, doesn't it, by?
It's, it's actually administratively handled now by SEMCO.
Oh.
But we pay our share through this mechanism.
The others will take, you know, take ash on those at another point in time. I just want to get the easy stuff out of the way now, to get into the more in-depth stuff next week. These are allocations, the two we're talking about today, they're pretty much automatic for the next several years.
So why are we talking about them today and then later on, because of the funding source?
Yes.
Because they're coming from lost?
Yes.
Okay. So we.
Pay that, we just get kicked off the Missouri River, that's how that works.
Yeah.
It's a subscription to stay on the West Coast of.
So today, we're allocating this from local option sales tax, but if we wanted to take a look at one, any one of these items later on, that would still be an option, right?
We look at all of these later.
Okay. I move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Okay, the next four, basically, they're all non-tax, with the auditors officers, records management. You can go to pages twenty-five, twenty-seven under the auditor, but these are numbers basically to be put in, that the balance is on hand, if you give them authority to go ahead and spend, they are controlled, in this case with the auditor, controlled by the auditor for certain purposes. With the auditor. So, put it in there. Actually, I want to go to page twenty-six, there's not a number there, but it does not affect, we put two hundred thousand and fifty, as long as we're money in the fund, so. I could add two hundred thousand there, it doesn't really matter. Just gives him the authority to go ahead and spend. And the cash is in the fund balance. For some reason, we didn't have that in there, but we should have put two hundred thousand, which will affect tax asking whatsoever. So just basically receiving, give him authority to spend, which he controls the money anyway.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. Looks like an awful lot of power down in that office.
Very powerful.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Same thing on page twenty-eight, that's a quarter of the fine fees, he is not getting any more money, he doesn't pick for fun. So we look at the balance, we'll stick the number in there, if it's fifteen hundred balance, we'll put fifteen hundred because of their taxes whatsoever, and again, that's controlled by him. So I will check the balance, see what's in there today, and put a number in there. Unless they have more expenditures coming out this year, we're going to have to put anything in. If they spend all this year, we leave it at zero. I'll check with that, and I, I'm out. So it's just receiving.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Now go to emergency services, which is about three fourths way through the court. We'll look at page fifteen, seventeen, again, these two items are not taxed. On page fifteen, shows either this day a twenty thousand dollar loan payback. On page sixteen, where he's actually, we're looking at what's on hand, potential loans, two various accounts for. On page sixteen, where he's actually even at, budgeting what's on hand, potential loans, two various accounts for, maybe new ambulance or emergency vehicle or that you, if they have to come. Do you have, I'll prove that. It's like a setup years ago through revenue sharing. That's a long time ago, but it's just a revolving account, they put a certain amount of money in there, just revolves, any interest earned on investment schools in this fund also.
So can we look at the last five years?
On the loans? I'm not sure they made any loans the last five years.
I know we did one. We've done one.
Twenty, you didn't do any, twenty-one, we haven't done any, not a whole pack.
I thought we helped out somebody with an ambulance, at least three or four years ago.
Was that Mowville?
Was it Mowville? Was it Mowville or Lott?
It sounds familiar that we did it, I don't think it was Lottin', but regardless.
Where did the money originally come from while that's being looked up?
Revenue sharing. I think the board back, when they had revenue sharing, which was a federal grant bringing money in, and revenue sharing's pretty much what the board spent on. They chose to put, I think it's two hundred thousand into this fund, and that's just a revolving account. The board didn't have pretty much money into it, unless they wanna give more money available to the cities for ambulances, but.
Cause it gets.
It's worked out very well.
It's get, it gets paid off by those that, by their ambulance.
And they get paid off, I believe they're interest-free loans. I believe they don't charge interest or something. After there's money sitting in the fund, you have to use on interest on that, but.
But that's like a less than a half a percent, isn't it? A third.
They're parting interest and all.
Fiscal year fifteen was fifty thousand dollars.
That was probably, I think it was Mowville.
Okay, nineteen?
Eighteen, fiscal year.
No, no, I'm sorry, and then two. And twenty, and twenty-one, and seventeen, do we know?
I'm sorry, we conferred, we didn't, that would be not really be helpful.
Okay.
So, yeah. Is this something we need to continue going forward with?
To me, that raises that question. Uh, if we're, I mean, I commend the board today, I mean, we came out one million four hundred and sixty-four thousand, but as we look at these different things, um.
Just somebody might want to talk to Mr. Brown about, I'm sure he'll have any idea as to how it's been this year, but that's true, if everybody had a new ambulance, do we need this fund?
So the money was originally populated by dollars from tax revenue from the citizens of?
Revenue sharing.
Federal grant.
Yeah, that's years and years and years ago.
So tied.
This money really could go other places if you want to discontinue this program, and the board has the authority to move it wherever they want it.
But the money that originally came in, the original source of that was federal grant money, or was taxpayer money that was matching?
It was a federal revenue.
Were there any, was there anything tied?
Is it still alive?
Oh, it's been gone for twenty-five years.
Is there anything in those original grants that stated that what that money had to be?
I don't know, it's totally up to the board how they spent it. I think we spent a chunk on some windows here, we spent, spent some off the care facility. It just spent wherever money was needed.
So I like the idea of the availability, but I don't know if I like the idea of a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars being available every year for something that's not used but once every four. And I'm not saying we have to decide that today, but I think if we're gonna unturn every stone, and we all know the challenge we have, it certainly looks like an area to at least explore. It's just my opinion.
Could we maybe, when we toward the end here, if we need more money, is this a possibility?
I like.
Go ahead.
I'd like to see if we can take it up next meeting, and I, I know we're gonna need more money.
Do you wanna postpone this, is that your motion?
Yes, please.
So you want it on next week's agenda, and then we have Mr. Brown here also.
Yep.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Young to postpone, uh, emergency services item one EMS loan fund non-tax to next week's meeting, which would be the twelfth.
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Next one is eighteen and nineteen, again, this is just a grant from state for training, they receive the money, they spend it. How many, it's certainly hours per training. They get it usually every year, sometimes it may be a skip, but they get it, they spend it, if they don't get it, they don't spend.
Can we look back at the previous years as well, please?
Fiscal year nineteen, two thousand two hundred and forty-five expended. Fiscal year eighteen, thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-seven expended.
So this year, we beat about thirty-two hundred if it doubled, right? Last year was twenty-two fifty-one, previous year was twenty-two forty-five, and we're budgeting five thousand.
But we're also budgeting five thousand revenue, too, so it's really an offset, there's no tax dollars going into this.
Okay.
So you may get grants for ten thousand, that'd be, you know, off for two thousand.
And where's that money coming from?
That comes from the state.
And then if it doesn't get used?
Um, whatever they usually give for grants, usually what they have.
But that's not been the case the last three years.
Oh, we'd have to look at the rest of it, too.
I can look at the revenue and the expenses together, um, current year budget and expenses in the net zero. And then if I can kind of look up the past years.
So are they only getting reimbursed, sorry if I'm the slowest one in the room on this, are they only getting reimbursed up to the five thousand, and it's just, so?
Or whatever the grant, we're just sticking a number in there, and then offset.
Okay, okay.
It could be four thousand, it could be eight, we don't know.
It's a wash.
It's a wash, yes, absolutely, no tax dollars.
Fiscal year, there was thirteen thousand expended and four thousand received.
In that case, I.
How do you overspend by nine thousand?
They did get additional funds that year, Gary could explain that, but I'm sure there was like an eight thousand dollar revenue came in. Not from the state, but another group that donated that money, but we'd have to ask Gary to make sure, but no tax dollars involved, that's all I'm saying.
Should we postpone this one, too?
If you want to go back there.
Well, I'm asking, should we have, I'd, I'd be a little more comfortable if he explained that. I mean, to make sure that it's what, what, what he trains gets paid back for.
Well, I asked you, or he wouldn't, he'd be in the red.
Well, according to Michelle, she just said that there are thirteen thousand odd dollars.
Spent.
Spent, and he only received four thousand some odd dollars in, so that says.
There's another grant back five years ago, how many ever years, but he can explain that if he'd like to.
Potentially could have received it into a different.
Potentially.
I think we should at least ask the question, but.
Postpone it?
Then move to, and then we can just talk about both of them next, next week, if that works.
Makes sense for me. Is that your motion?
It is.
Motion by Taylor, second by right to postpone item two EMS training non-tax to next week's meeting as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Uh, we went through board concerns, I believe we're adjourned.